So they're not, you know, there's like, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a.
Uh, is it gonna be?
No. So people, yeah, this long time downstate. Very.
Right.
Thank you so sound for you.
Call the regular council meeting of March eighteenth to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
But we just stood the flag, United States of America. Yes, Republic, just has one nation under God, in this all, with the Lord our Father.
For all about.
Turners.
Here.
Going up?
Yes, here.
Here.
One, here.
Okay. Um. Any changes to the agenda? So, we'll check, leave the agenda as presented, then, no motion necessary. Okay. Request to appear before council, uh, Mr. Schmidt, okay, we have a couple that, and publicly, put, put, public input, Mary. Okay, Rick and Brenna Newt.
Brenna, I don't think.
Okay.
Again, my name is Rick Schmidt, three, one, and four, seven, and I am also the chair of the downtown development department. Also known as the DEA. Uh, in your packet, you should have received a, um, information, um, that we put together about creating a social district. In downtown, uh, Frankfurt.
Yes.
Uh, my background on the social district came about during COVID, which would allow, um, business owners that have uh, liquor licenses, um, to sell their drinks and then allow the patrons to go outside with them in a designated area. Um, since that time, uh, there are about ninety, um, cities in the state of Michigan that have social district founders. As a DEA, we asked, uh, the mayor working with, uh, our chief of police, uh, chief cats to do some research on DEA. And the role they played with social district. And, um, uh, she did a great job in, uh, talking to his peers in the area and the state and identified that, um, that, uh, there were no real safety issues or security issues that it relates from the police department. And indeed, uh, in some cases helps the cause to have a defined area where you can participate. Uh, in practice, you see, uh, a draft, uh, app, what a social district could look like in Frankfurt. Uh, and that's, uh, initially, we just did that to help us, essentially, the whole downtown. Uh, a social district participant has to sign up and they have to pay. So for example, my business, uh, we have to get registered with the state and then pay a fee to the state. And then also you have to pay to provide, uh, certain types of containers that are identified as streets that are within the social district. So it is a, um, financial commitment for business owners to participate. But not everybody that had the license, uh, may participate in social district, they could choose not to, and many could just don't wanna have to have that additional offense. Uh, we outlined or recommending the hours of operation for a social district would be from eleven AM to eleven PM. Uh, going on, uh, the chief's, uh, concept of, uh, that's quiet time, uh, in town at the end. Um, the common areas would be very, um, defined throughout, uh, the downtown area. And you saw examples of signage that, uh, that Brennan was able to, uh, put together. Uh, to see what the customer and, um, and the residents would see, uh, as to where a social district starts. And where it ends and what are the responsibilities for them. Uh, of course, there's a myriad of laws that we'd all have to comply with, and, uh, they are pretty straightforward and all of them are, uh, good laws.
All right.
Can't take a drink into an establishment that doesn't have a license. Uh, or if it had a license, you can't take a drink in there. Um, and all the other restrictions that would go along with just responsible alcohol consumption that we already practice. Um, my experience is that the cities that have social districts, um, it, it's not embellishing a culture of drinking. It's, um, a way for, um, guests and, um, and residents like to enjoy the downtown area. And it does provide a little bit of revitalization area as well. An example of this would be during iron. When the whole street is closed and, uh, if we had a social district, um, the guests could, uh, participate in that and be out in the defined areas and, um, and visiting the businesses that are open on main street. Process today was just to plant the seed with the city council and field any questions, um. If and when there was a time when the city council felt appropriate, we proceed down the next steps that we was in. Uh, the DEA would work in doing all the big work in providing everything that the city council would be doing, because it's holding the, the city council would have to screw with it so.
So, okay, cuz it is, I believe it is on our agenda for tonight, yeah. Um. And I guess we can ask you some questions as we go through, okay, we'll do that. For now, or? No, when we come to the agenda item, if you don't mind, overstate to go down there, okay?
Or face if you that.
I don't want, did you need to leave?
No.
Okay, you're fine, okay. There. Um, Denzil, uh, Bus, Ron Scott with an annual report.
Good evening, council, my name is Ross, six, three, hundred, resident of Alberta. But, um, I'm here on behalf of Benzy Ghost to deliver the findings from our, in twenty twenty-four. This is. She, um, look on my, 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 to the, my, to the. You can talk against. Just by face, uh, what we do is, uh, every day in our mission for Benzy Buck to provide, uh, curb to curb service for people, uh, that, um, they, uh, cannot demand dial, so we're able to take care of them with advance and same day reservations. We pro- provide health rides for our passengers, and those are connections to make medical commitments to ten county, Manassas, Grand Travis County, Westford, and Leland, as well as people appointments and medication, uh, runs, that type of thing. We also provide, uh, service to both pure captain and Manassas Blacker airports. And, uh, you see in the summer, we have the Crystal Lake Express trolley as well as night owl run, those run later, uh, till midnight on, uh, Fridays and Saturdays during summer hours. For twenty twenty-four, our funding consisted of eighteen percent from federal, forty-one percent from state, twenty-nine percent from local mileage, nine percent from passenger fares, two percent from advertising arrangements, and one percent from income, interest income from donations. We were also, uh, benef- benefited from the, uh, counties when we asked a new mileage of one percent. And that was an increase from point five, but it was, it was a new mileage. And, uh, we want to thank you for the support of, uh, of, uh, Benzy County residents and all who voted in favor for that. It's a five-year mill, and that will go into effect in January twenty twenty-six. We asked for that as a new mill because we knew that, uh, the state funding would be increased from four percent this year in twenty twenty-five. And we're anticipating a decrease of another five percent in twenty twenty-six. So if that mill did not pass, we would have been faced with eliminating services and runs, um, and that type of thing to be able to, uh, keep, keep it going. Our fleet consists of twenty-year vehicles, twenty-five percent of which, well, seven are, uh, gasoline, and they do mix some of those with propane. Uh, some seventy percent are just run exclusively on propane, and, uh, we have one hybrid minivan that does a lot of our health runs. Our ridership grew in twenty twenty-four, uh, was a record-breaking year for us. We grew, uh, twelve percent with a hundred and twelve thousand trips, and we are currently tracking, uh, tracking this year, year over year to, uh, exceed that as well as, uh, current ridership growths. Looking ahead, we are in the middle of a rural community, um, uh, grants that is examining a, uh, expansion of our health rides and mobility rides. And it consists of a three to five-year expansion plan as we move into the implementation stages of, of the grant. Where that will need additional HR service and drivers and vehicles. Um, because part of that grant is also going to allow us to have health rides to go downstate to, you know, Brandon Rapids, Dan Arbor, places where, uh, people up north would have sometimes difficulty getting to. Uh, we also are looking to extend our evening hours to accommodate workers and additional, uh, tourists, uh, you know, coming up up here. Uh, and as well as Sunday, Sunday service, uh, would be a possibility and, and, and a likely, uh, likelihood of, uh, having, being able to do that. But all in all, we are, uh, continuing to, to respond to the growing needs of the community. And we do that with, uh, an excellent team of drivers, dispatchers, and mechanics here to keep the buck on the road. And that's so we can continue our mission to, uh, you know, help our community by getting them places they need to go safely and, uh, um. We, uh, I would like to ask also if, uh, for public input for additional, uh, surveys. We had surveys go out, and we're also trying to solicit, uh, additional information to, uh, specifically for the health rides and, um, and, uh, mobility tours, and we'd love, uh, further input, you know, we, uh, my cars to be able to get in touch with us.
I just have one question, and I think you might be able to help me present this correctly, but at our fire advisory board, there are times when a patient is at the hospital and they have no family, nobody here to come and pick them up. Is there a way that you could work with, you know, to go up to the hospital and take them home, or their doctor's appointment? So is that, am I saying this correctly, it's my?
What is your operations?
We, uh, have the last buses off the road differently. But sometimes they're still coming back, but, uh, sure.
So if somebody after eight p.m. on a, a hospital needed ride back?
Yeah, we just, we just don't have, um, operations to operate past that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure to get my business card as well, and, uh, maybe we can talk about other solutions or volunteers, uh, to do that. Um, you know, certainly don't want to leave anyone stranded, uh, at doctor or being released. Uh, our services are pretty much limited to non-emergencies, medical, so, you know, we train for the lifts and proper, um, steering of passengers. But, you know, with, uh, the, any additional services past that, we're limited to.
Yeah, well, it, this is mostly for people that don't have family here to help them out or any kind of a care group. So we thought to possibly, uh, contacting senior resources to deceive, cuz there's been incidents where, um, somebody might have had a doctor's appointment and they got it right there. No right that, oh, so.
Well, it's part of our, talking to people briefly, recognizing as the app and service in general, uh, that, um, you know, the timing of the ride to be ready to offer, or, uh, you know, especially our, our veterans trying to get to appointments there.
Right.
The county, uh, and as far as you're looking at, is if we can't staff it or, you know, have the resources to do it, you know, looking for volunteers that would be able to, to do that, uh, you know, there's legal issues, but, uh, certainly, uh, speaking able to help pick them up, uh, when they need it the most, it's part of our American. So I would love to be able to discuss that with you further, certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank, I had a question. In today's, uh, in today's world, you've seen the cuts happening in Washington on various programs and departments. Have you guys started to give any thoughts to your federal funding level?
It's, uh, it's definitely a concern, uh, because a lot of the state funding ultimately comes through the FTA and DOT and that type of thing. Um, we're right now, no news, it's good news in terms of what's happening on the federal level. Unfortunately, we're, we're looking still at a decrease in state, uh, I mean, that we've traditionally had in the past. And that's why it's so important that we're getting these grants in place to do that. You never know, uh, basically, just get a call and say, yeah, I'm, I'm, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Public inputs. Please, uh, step to the podium, give your name and address, please. Mary, you wanna start first?
Mary Armstrong, I live in Frankfurt, on Manassas Street. Uh, I'm here, uh, the, I understand there is a death proposal going to be made tonight, and so that's why we're here. Um, we wouldn't know a thing about it, because for the time it's of the mayor who finds to let us know. As you can imagine, we are exhausted by this whole bathroom thing. And we're beginning to feel there is an effort here, honey, child, because for some, we don't know why, because we've lived here thirty-three years, tried to contribute to the community. Uh, we just don't know why, it's always us. Anyway, could you not even consider moving it down a few more feet into the dome to the north where no one would see it? It's gonna be right up by our house. If I went back to the tents, I just try to think out of sand and pocket. And the neighbors, our neighbors to just to the north of us, their front door, they'll come out their front window, and what they'll see is, is a bathroom. And it would just, it doesn't seem fair, three months of the year, when the beach is busy, and we're spending all this money, and this is gonna cost so much unhappiness. Anyway, who's ready to reconsider, uh, some, a different plan?
Thank you. John?
John, I'm sorry, Wayne Sachs. Um, I'm, I'm obviously able to speak to the same issue. We feel very fortunate to live on the beach, and we've enjoyed it for thirty-two years. Uh, but they, we live in a house that, as Mary said, if, if, if I understand correctly, we, somebody actually reached out and touched it, like, western, I can't, I can't build, as I, well. Um, we've been creating our view of the sunset, or view of, like, restaurant. And obviously, the light down the whole lot. With our neighbors living north, and then the gans, probably have either horse. Um, they walk out their front porch, and that's what they see at their front door, it's right there. Uh, but, I don't know, maybe, probably be away at the most. Uh, and they may have been there, but they didn't know about this whole thing until, uh, just, I think yesterday. Um. We, we live close enough to the, uh, beach, uh, we hear conversations all the time of kids on the benches. They, they, they think it's private, they think they're having a private conversation. They don't know that we can hear, never even say, many of the time, that, uh, all that, because of all the, uh, conditions. Um, once we, we hear what's right on. And, uh, those, even progressives and sounds travel more, uh, it seems, I don't know, it's like, they're seeing the ambient sound of everything else, the climate, or there's something else that sounds curious for a night. So we hear it even more. We have had some experience with, uh, with the problem that, uh, this was during, there were, excuse me, um, porta potties lined up on, right by our house. And, uh, it's pretty much the same site that being proposed for a few years. And while that was going on, we, we would hear all the conversations, we'd hear the doors closing, which isn't a big deal during the day, it, it was at night in the case of the porta potties, that, that, that made not knowing to wake yourself. And to hear all the instructions of, trying to give their kids, uh, let them go to the bathroom, it's, uh, it is not a private place. And then we also learned that light attracts people at night. People walk out the beach and they try to find a, a bench, and they pick one or their supply. And often, and not often, but occasionally, it's people, kind of two o'clock, their mind slows, and they're wondering, just, you're sort of trying to continue their conversations, and they're a little longer than they realize. Uh, it's, uh, uh, anything that attracts people down there, that, 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 at least for us. And we also learned that the prevailing wind is from south and southwest and west. Um, and it carries some rust and orders. Uh, we, but we think it would be especially, uh, being scared of the infrastructure by the entrance to the McDonald's house. I can't imagine walking out the front door and that's what you see, or you go sit on your front porch and that's what you're watching. It would seem very difficult. Uh, obviously, we wouldn't like it much either, but, but ignore that for a second.
Time that was too nervous. That was sweet, um.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, full, full there.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks, John. Steve?
Let's see, it goes, uh, five, seven, eight, Awesome Avenue in Frankfurt. Um, I wanna use my green minutes and my safe green days, but I just wanted to publicly thank the city council for their dedication and the hard work and the energy that you provide to the city. You know, on a daily, weekly, monthly, annual basis, some of you have been on city council for several years. I attend several meetings a year, and I know how you will discuss proposals and debate proposals, investigate proposals, and you take your time and you do it openly, you don't do it in secret, you're transparent, and you take your time to make what you believe could be, is the best decision for the city of Frankfurt and their residents. I believe that you listen to everybody, whether you vote with them or not. I know in, in my feelings with the city council, again, previous versions and this version, that when I've come to the council and expressed my opinion, I know that you listen to me, and I know that you consider what I'm saying, even if you, in the end, vote opposite of what I wish you would do. I can only imagine how frustrating it must be as a city council member that behaves in this way, that finally comes to a decision, and, uh, as that decision is being implemented, people show up at the eleventh and twelfth hour and cry foul, accuse you of operating in secret or underhandedly. And I know that's not true, and if people read the paper, you know, the times I don't come to a meeting, I still go online and I read the agenda and I read the information. So maybe I, when I do that, I'll say, well, I don't need to go to this. Um. But, uh, I just want you to know that there's more people in the city of Frankfurt that's for you than there is against you. And I know it's gotta be frustrating, you make sacrifices, not only do you go to regular meetings, but you go to special meetings, and you make sacrifices, you spend time away from your family and your friends to, to serve the city the best way that you can. And I just want you to know that myself, and I know there's other people that are very appreciative of that.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Your fault. Yes, sir.
I'm Troy, and I'm with the county road commission, I'm the manager. I moved it, uh, almost here last month to kind of explain what we're doing. I just came today to introduce myself to you guys, that way you can put a name on the base and, uh, to drop off some more flyers. So you guys can more likely have a beer, but. So I.
I think you're the person that I need to ask this to, and I think it fell through the cracks on my part, uh, about the, because we are having an election in November, and I know you also. Policy always has been a special election like that. You reimburse, but it's my understanding in a conversation, and I don't know if it was you or the person prior to you, that the city could not be reimbursed for whatever reason, and I never got the opportunity. So maybe I need to personally call you and talk to you about that.
Totally, it's. You said, you think, you know, I thought.
Okay.
Sweet. It's affordable.
Because we went around and around the last time that the state commission had a special election and they would not reimburse uh, us, the city, and some laws that cities didn't get reimbursed. So if you have a, a card with you, could you leave it with me?
Slight, my, my touches.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, you wanna measure?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
My name is Jill Marvel, I'm the president of Crystal Lake Township, I'm with the twenty-four eighty-two four seven, not the person. I'm picking the forests out on the others.
Okay.
My husband did not look at my calendar, and he invited people to dinner tonight, and our issue is the very last thing on the agenda.
Okay.
So that's why I'm stepping up right now, because he's got consult for dinner. Crystal Lake Township exists close to putting our short-term rental ordinance. We're voting on it tomorrow night, and I've had a conversation with the mayor, and I was clutch based with the chief. And in my conversation with Zoe Ann, we want to work something out with the chief, so he's doing our short-term rental inspections. And then working with our enforcement officer till our enforcement guy is comfortable doing them. We wanted the money to run through the city, so it was official, but I understand from the mayor, we didn't do that.
Correct.
But what I am asking for a little attitude, because we are under the fire umbrella, is that maybe you could be a little, give us a little attitude with the chief's time, and he could do a few of the inspections during the day. Because this guy works every night, he's at meetings, he's at public appearances, and to have to add one more thing to his personal calendar, I just, we're a community, and if he could have a little attitude to do a few inspections for us during the day, that would be great. And you don't have to date, you guys will deliberate over it.
We will, when it comes to the agenda.
Think, my research, most of the licenses are view of Frankfurt. I could only find twelve people out on vacation, run by owner, a daddy, all of the professional ones that are actually Crystal Lake Township. I think if we get thirty of the floor, so we're not.
Lucky you. Lucky you.
Yeah, so I don't think it's going to be a big time constraint, and we don't go live till twenty-six.
Okay.
So when you're talking, if we could just give this guy a little bit of a break and let him help us out, it would be great. I am here with Judy and Peter, our clerk. The other goal I had is we're gonna have a better relationship with you guys. And with Crystal Lake Township, I am, we have a new board, and I won't rest, and neither will Judy, so we're all doing from Saturday to other.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judy. Enjoy your dinner.
Yeah.
Jane?
Thanks, I'm Jayway, uh, for, uh, seriously, to cross the beach restroom, uh, location. So served, uh, previously, uh, planning mission, was also a member of the beach that turned key restroom, you know, committee. Uh, we spent several years debating and trying to find the, the right location for the re-trust room. The one that the current record board has identified as, um, you know, something for you to consider this evening. Was really one of two choices that we, we have boiled down to as a committee, uh, there, and also the location now by the current, um, portages, so, and just south of that, the water. We, as committee, uh, chose the one down by the, uh, portages and, um, really based on some community input that we had at that time, that indicated that was the best location, and we had good support for that location from our community, including members of the, of the community that had homes right on the beach. So we proceeded in that direction, invested. So we proceeded in that direction, invested a pair of it, as everyone's aware, citing the project. Only to as. As Steve alluded to earlier, had it broke in our face and. And ultimately, it kind of divided our community, which was unfortunate. So I'm here tonight really to encourage you to. Consider the site that you're looking at now, adjacent to the swings that I. Understand it would run parallel to the sidewalk in the north-south direction. Would encourage the city to respond to the Armstrong's concerns and. The other neighbors as much as you can in terms of. You know, privacy, the sound deadening, vegetation. The light goes off maybe at ten o'clock at night, so you're not attracting visitors that are. Making sure that you have good door closers, so the doors don't slam. Anything that you can do to minimize. The impact on those homeowners, those two owners in particular, I think would be. Be very advised to do that. In terms of its location, though, if you really think about being on the beach. That would give us now a beach restroom at the north end of our public beach. And at the south end, so it's pretty balanced. And I think if you oriented in a fashion. East of the, east of or almost where the current sidewalk is. Visibility from those two homes would be minimized. As you stand there and look at it, anytime you push it. Further towards the lake, it's just going to be more visible to both neighbors. So it's a location that I've stood at many times personally. With members of your council, with a beach restroom to be talking about it. And it just really seems to be the location that hopefully. This community can get behind and build there. They can be on the be frank, just being offered the city of Frankfurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input.
Ryan Smith, thirteen sixty Bello's Avenue. Just a question of a from the group. Last time we met, you were under kind of like a no talk about the tower. Issue down on the Bello's Beach. And just wondering if you had an update on that, if you're allowed to speak anymore about it on your behalf. If you could give the group that's in here, you know, any of your input as far as. What you guys know.
As I said at the last meeting, because attorneys are involved. We, we are not legalese, and so therefore we can't make any comments. And there's things that have been filed between the attorneys, so we really, as a council, cannot. At this time.
You were, you were at the Crystal Lake Township meeting.
Yes, it was.
There's another one tomorrow night. There is a meeting scheduled first of May. That is going to be the zoning committee is going to meet. And. You know, there'll be, the board is going to be meeting women making a new, hopefully, different decision towards this.
Again, we just can't say anything. Okay, thank you, Brad. Thank you. Any other public input? Mr. Russell.
Auto order. But I want to make a motion. The council considered microphones and a microphone here. So that when you get to be eighty-nine, you can hear everything.
We'll work on it. Any other public input? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Thank you. Correspondents?
Yeah, three pieces of correspondence wanted to Robert Marks, he's with the phone calls. He praised Chief Katz for his dedication to continually improving Frankfurt Police Department. The grand lycuous certificate was completed by Shannon. She has a one certificate. She's also taking another class. That's the S T R software. And the first federal board chair, Patners, sent a letter requesting.
Which we will look at that during question time. Correct? Okay, moving on to approval of the limits. Very, very thorough. So I'll approve the regular council minutes of. February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the special council meeting of. February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five is presented also. Okay.
We're not.
Yes. Moving on to bills.
Please note that there was, because there is one, there's one person that I took up for them in front of you is a new. Worship, just so it's easier to follow.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve P K vouchers five seven two seven five through five seven two nine eight. H R A eight nine two nine through eight nine five five, the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-three. Sixty-five cents, of which. Three hundred thirty thousand two hundred ninety-nine seventy-eight cents for taxes. Payroll voucher number four two one five seven through four two two six one. E F T seven six one through seven seven four, the amount. One hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars forty-one cents. Of which a hundred and five thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars thirty-two cents for wages. Twenty-five thousand nine hundred seven dollars ninety-one cents for employee retiring benefits. Ten thousand nineteen dollars eighty-three cents for employee deductions and twenty-two thousand. Five hundred sixty-five dollars thirty-five cents for federal tax.
Second. Roll call.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion, approve vouchers five seven two nine nine through five seven three two nine. And five seven three three one through five seven three four three. In the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll second.
Sir, yes, termish.
Yes.
Or not.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then I will make a motion approving voucher five seven three three zero. Payable to Olson Electric in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Roll call.
Chargers.
Yes.
Or not.
Yes.
Franch, yes.
I have a question on the. Not so much a question on the bills, they've all been. Any questions that I have described to you. I guess it's a matter of, with respect to. Some of the vehicle repairs and whatnot. Were we tracking on what vehicles are getting repaired in the sense that. If we're, if we're experiencing a lot of vehicle repairs on a particular vehicle and whatnot. Are we, are we looking at that? Am I? Clear? Yeah, okay. So tracking that on the D P W side, I don't mind keeping track of that.
I think what he's trying to say is there are vehicles that is costing us more to.
I think that's a maintenance.
Extend the life of the. You know, it's hard to be gentle trust and hope the emissions. The changes to curbing versus what's on those pieces of dirt. I mean, we're far done to extend the life of those trucks.
Absolutely.
And the deal with the new town.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council members' reports. Ed was, he had a conflict tonight. So we're gonna move right to, and I will report on the D D A and anything else. Ed would cover.
So I'm up.
You're up.
I'm up. So the Personnel Committee met today. It was about personnel issues. So it was a close meeting at the fire department. A fairly short meeting. And that, the Finance Committee, we didn't really meet, but we had the audit report. I'll let the mayor report on that. Water and sewer did not meet. The Planning Commission. Met last Tuesday, the eleventh. And not a lot to report there. The bylaws were reviewed and. They're making some recommended changes that are going to come to us. They approved. The extension of the building use permit from True North down at the new Shell Station. Construction is scheduled to start sometime in May. And they appointed a Planning Commission representative to attend D D A meetings, and that's going to be pentfold. And the subcommittees, they're looking, continuing at the short-term rental and any associated fines. Or non fines with some of that. They're continuing to look at the rooftop ordinance. On buildings as well as. Going through the potential. Blade ordinance. So that's more or less what happened at the planning commission. They don't meet again until, I believe, May. Blue, we had a very short meeting last Tuesday. And again, that was a personnel meeting, and that's all that was handled there. And the, the meet on this Thursday. To get an update on the upcoming construction and that. So that will be reported on next month. The Marina Authority did meet, although you'll see some recommendations from the Marina Authority with respect to. The, the. Marina managers, well as the launch ramp managers. So that's what I have.
Well, me. We had no official finance meeting, however, there was a couple. The police chief came to me where he needed some monies to fulfill. Some things that were going on in his department, like uniforms. The approval to one of the officer's cars that needed major. Work done on it that hasn't been done in quite a while. So we authorized that and we. Made the adjustments budget-wise and overtime. Needed to be beat ups. So we, we did do that and Chris has made those. And then also, we did have our audit presentation and we came out very, very good. And part of the coverage is going to be an agenda item of what we're gonna do with that. I did go to the tree board meeting. We met on March twelve. It was mentioned, and I wasn't real clear, Josh, on this. They needed. For the tree city sign, they needed a year.
So every year.
Yeah.
We reapply for the tree city and it opened more and of course every year we receive it.
Yeah.
With that, we get an updated sticker that we put on the main sign at our entrances.
Okay, that's what he was talking about. The tree board is going to plant forty-three trees. This year, eighteen at the Park Connector that is right across from the elementary school. They're gonna. Continue on with that and put more there. Tree at Perry Winkle Garden Welcome Sign. Ten at the Beach Edge Property or Project, which is right down in our community wall. But we gotta check with Harbor Likes to make sure. We can do that, and if it's on city property. Two at the Marina and two at Arbor. For Arbor Day at the elementary school, which is April the twenty-fifth. One at the Gateway Apartments that got knocked down by a car, so they're gonna replace that. Three at the elementary school along Lelandal where others were taken out. And two on George Street and two on Balsa. All of our projects were spit, split out into months most. For most appropriately for, for the months, like three a month, and the nursery needs a lot of work. And there's a high school project where the. Honor Society will help the city like. Mulch and do all of that. That's gonna be in May and. Deer are still a problem. As you will see, some of our trees are wrapped now because the deer are. Like in the bark, I guess. And I was asked to talk to the chief about that, if he could. Check with the D N R and see if there's anything we can do about getting the deer out of here. See, I forgot to ask. Don't deer a lot. Well, we went that route before and. And then the D N R knows have, I know some communities have been, been able to. Eliminate them. So the Housing Commission, I did not attend that. I did attend D D A. The Chamber Director gave us a report. She's working on improving the city map. And I have one street that's been wrong for a long time, and I want to talk to you about. It's called Skinner Road, and it's not, it's day out. Shows up on the map.
On, on my Google.
It's in a road, but it's not. According to a nineteen oh four Corps of Engineer map, it's day out.
Forever being Skinner Road.
You know. She is working on membership invoicing, making small changes to the chamber website. The car show is still on for two hundred and fifty cars. That's the first weekend in June. Is that correct, Josh? Police Chief Katz presented his findings as requested about the social district. No one he talked to, several communities, not just locally, had no problems. Presented requirements in an Anha committee. Was formed to take information and present to council or in, in. Yeah, which is what Rick was talking about. I am, a suggestion was given to start coming up with ideas during our. Hours when Main Street is closed. We need to jump on that because not gonna be long. Brenna also gave us a breakdown about spectrum and sharing capital, which was very. Interesting. And I'm willing to share it with anybody that is interested. So that was pretty much it, I think, for me. When I did attend a fire advisory board meeting, which we had. All entities present, and that went very well. We gave them the proposed. Shared cost. According to the formula. And their contracts will be coming up in the next couple of months. For us to send out the contracts. A lot of good discussion and a good representation. I was really pleased with that. That's. I was really pleased with that. That's, uh, the, uh, great committee did not, we wanna clean up the ones that we've got. Onto you, Brady.
Okay, uh, let's see, public safety, we have not met. I would like to have a meeting here next couple of weeks, uh, need to talk about parking situation at Lockhart Field during softball games. It's kind of a mess with, uh, uh, fire station being right there for the fire guys to get out on calls, uh, kind of poses a danger. Um, so we'll schedule a meeting real soon for that. Um, Rec Board, we met the third of this month. Um, I guess we discussed the beach bathroom, which is gonna be on the agenda later, and we'll talk about that, um. We talked about, um, rules for dog park and came up with some signage that we're gonna go ahead and post up there. Um, we also talked a little bit about, um, the fellows park and whether or not we're gonna move forward with the ADA doc or if we're gonna use those funds to put down a well or potentially, uh, septic system for your future bathroom there. That stuff's still in the works. So that was about it for Rec Board. Uh, Airport, we did not meet due to a lack of corn. That's all I knew.
You have nothing? Okay, Commissioners Record.
So, um, I have a report, such a very top, I have, um, a note. We're saying there is there are no order patient meetings in March. So our first meeting this month, we did not have form, and so we did not meet. The second meeting, we knew we weren't going to do, um, so that was off the docket. So our next, um, work missions meeting is April first.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing I want to point out is that I'm going to be out of town, April fourth to the sixteenth. I will not be at next month's meeting, so I can submit a report. And, um, but I won't be here to, to talk about it.
Your report will be fine.
Okay. Um, and as far as speaking else, um, I'm not sure what you all wanna hear, you do have my report.
Yeah, very lengthy, very good.
Here's the things, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be, um, as communicative as I can. Um, this is where, this is, these are the place I'm going, these are the things I'm seeing and, and hopefully this is helpful.
I, I think I read in there, there, that the recycling move of the recycling is a goal.
That's.
Am I correct?
That is.
Now, are they going to, because it was my understanding there was going to be an agreement between the city, Mr. Rainier and the county of what was gonna go. Cause I talked to Mr. Schaper and, uh, he was going to draft that and give it to the Commissioners. Did they, maybe it'll be addressed on, in April.
Perhaps, yeah, so my understanding, I don't have a good understanding of that. They said that it was a goal.
Yeah.
Um, and that, um, I, I think I heard mentioned that, um, there wanted to be, um, communication between, um, the county and Mr. Rainier.
Okay, well, uh, I'll contact Art and see what that said, cause he and I have been talking back and forth. And it's my understanding that maybe May, June, they will be moved and for the public's, uh, benefit, it's gonna go from where it's at, old back over where it used to be years ago, where the old Inco Building or, uh, north of Storm Cloud for a two-year period. So, yeah. Okay.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a quick question. Um, you say that the broadband service is ninety-one percent funded?
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of how much of that has been installed?
Um, I, we don't.
Okay.
I know, um, so what they, they're installing and then it doesn't look like they're quite cooking up yet. And so I think what it's in that funding is for, is for some of that. Um, and so, yes, so, um, there is a grant that's, um, we're all looking at and Charter, um, Jerry Capital. So all the interested parties are going in on this grant. And what they're trying to do too is kind of work amongst themselves so that they aren't overlapping. Because how this grant works is if two parties, um, go for the same area, then that excludes the one who doesn't win the thing. So they're trying to work together to try to get it so that everybody's kinda covers certain areas and so nobody's overlapping.
Okay.
It's a, it's a slow process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, maybe in the next couple of months, you, at least we've been asked a couple of two or three different times. You know, to get a little bit of a sense of timing on that, on that project.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be down to, you know. You know, kind of a sense it's gonna be done by fall or next spring or something.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that communication powers should be connected by May.
Yeah.
And the, the, the Motorola is saying, hey. Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So that will be a good thing.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Christine? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Per Treasure Report.
Congratulations to Nick Kirby, he has signed up for seven years, so I was on paper all around it. Um, there's one, in one instance, in the office, um, that someone's looking for the police and they wanted, uh, staff to take care of it. And our resident, or our staff is not trained to take those complaints, Chief Katz and I have discussed this. The best way for those complaints to be taken care of is to actually, we have the numbers, we're having, if it's an emergency, you know, nine one one, of course, but we have the number where you can call. The best place to do that is to actually call dispatch and get the, 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 whatever you, whatever you're, have an issue with. And that complaint is excited, signed a number. And that number ensures that it will either be the Frankford Police Department or the county or the state police or whomever will make sure that your, your concerns are addressed. Um, nothing will fall through the cracks that way. Um, so I think that there's, as the, you know, grave's up, there's more things going on. Just a little something to keep in mind, um, on how to take care of that. When we have those numbers, we'll be willing to help in any way we can. All right, and the other taxes, we have to be in the kind of treasure on March sixth. Um, on our sixth, we also, it was the mayor, uh, the staff and Wyatt Crawford, he sent in a demonstration of the, we have some made cloud version. We are currently on dot net. Um, it's becoming a little archaic and two years ago, we looked at the software and we didn't launch with that. Um, there were lots of things that needed to be addressed and in those two years, they've actually messed them quite nicely. Um, it is a cloud-based form, which means no matter where we're at, um, where we're located, because we're going to secure that site. Um, my question was, what if chart communications goes down? What do we do? Are we, tell? No, we have a cell phone, we have a C D cell phone, and all we have to do is do a wifi hotspot. We are still running, so that's fantastic. Um, right now, it's caused on the server, this will open up space on our score, so that's a benefit. Um, it backs up every fifteen minutes, which is great. Um, so there's lots of pros, not many cons, um, in our discussions. Anything that's new is gonna be a learning curve, so even for, well, for all of us, it's gonna be a little bit different. So we've used this program for, so, um, it's a program of a different version, so that's exciting. Hopefully I will get a quote within the next few days, so it can be discussed, um, even as an option, see if it's possible, um, in the next little bit. Um, we will be starting our budget workshops in April. They're posted here on the website. There are, um, I heard an update on your exhibit from, uh, Mr. Haversley and I have contacted Elizabeth Young with Keller Thomas. Um, she's at the Southfield to address that earned income or earned, um, unemployment act, um, policy. And we did receive our election reversals for the November early voting elections, you see both in the statement.
Okay, any questions for Chris? Josh, it's you.
Today, I got no notification from Republic Waste that our spring cleanup will be scheduled day twelve to sixteen. So we'll get that advertised and as always, we encourage our us to stay advantage of that opportunity. On April second, at one o'clock, there was a virtual meeting with the Corps of Engineers, uh, Mayor, you can participate in this.
Please.
Or anybody.
Yeah.
Uh, they have an update on the breakwater design, so I'm excited to see and hear what their.
Do you have a plan?
What, what date is that, Josh?
April second, one o'clock, it'll be a virtual meeting, I can, I can forward the link.
Okay, please.
If you wanna come here, we can. I'm hoping to go.
Okay, that sounds like winner.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I like the idea. Yep.
Um, hopefully it doesn't have a lot of rock, we jump off.
Yeah.
We'll see what they, what they propose. As far as the SCR software, we've got that database built. Uh, there, there are few properties that have kind of operated as a short term without ever, ever registering with us. So we'll deal with those properties, we'll, we'll initiate with a letter. And then we went from one twenty, which is our path down this year to, to one oh nine. So we lost a lot of licenses and a couple of the ones that, that we lost still have a platform on their P R V O, their V V, so we're gonna reach out to them and, and see what their ultimate status is.
Okay.
Um, but the mission that we set up, this software is working and, and, you know, I'm happy to report there aren't a lot of issues, um, a few, um, a whole address that, really with our, 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 our. Tomorrow, I'll be speaking at the Capitol Conference in Lansing about our family housing and residential facilities district that we created. Uh, we were one of the first communities in the state to do that, so we'll be talking and sharing that with other communities on, on the process associated with that. Um, in, in regards to expanding that district, we're still in the process of, of pinpointing a date to move forward with expanding that district and then also working with our property owners on a workshop over the application process, so that those properties can take advantage of potential tax incentives that are allowed under that statute. Um, we did have a little water service break on March sixth and ended up being an abandoning water service. Um, this allows us to coat open an area that also will, will enable us to fix a galvanized line or replace galvanized line that goes to form large home buildings. Um, so we didn't fully repair that patch, we'll come back and, and take care of that. But we did eliminate, uh, the abandoned lead that went into the old space car. So I'm not sure exactly what went to, might have had an old, uh, lumber building back many years ago that was located down there. Give my best guess. And then also, uh, yesterday, we had an issue, we had a water service issue. Ended up being a, a storm sewer that we never knew existed. Um, but it runs, runs along Game Street west of eleven, but it, it doesn't have a manual end. So a dead end somewhere near Ten Street, had water coming out of the ground, but what it is, a loose joint in all those homes, because the groundwater we have in that neighborhood are all pumps. So, you know, we'd have water coming out of the ground, everything looks like positive flow and then it would stop and then all of a sudden it come back again. That's where we made the determination after we excavated down there that, yeah, uh, storm sewer, if you know, nobody knew about. And my guess is, is years ago, when they did a separation, they never noted it. Um, but they did a separation, because they used to send that into the sanctuary sewer, we separated it. My best guess is they, they installed a storm sewer along there just for the cell phone. Um, and I'm, it's planned, and that's all taken care of, but we'll have that cleaned up and repaired. That'll be, uh, back in, in operation. And hopefully that'll help us with some of that groundwater area that you drive that neighborhood all the time, we got a water standing in that area. Um, I'm working with, uh, the Monte Harley, our handyman.
Oh, yeah.
He's coming out of retirement and he's working with Jim Rico. And, uh, we get surprising from them about, uh, the small building addition that we'll do at the Marina Building.
Oh, great.
We get moving on that. And, uh, the only real negative aspect of dealing with federal government at the moment, other than what funding we'll get for the breakwater. This is the grant submitted for the pump out unit at the Marina, that's on hold until we hear. It's on hold for damage. We'll see, uh, we'll see, sterilizes you on that. But a lot going on, transitioning into spring. Um, I hope everyone enjoyed Saturday and then Sunday, you know, did the same. Um, turning things back into, uh, a transition into spring with our, with our crew and, and converting all of our equipment into our, our spring summertime. There's a lot going on, the, the synergy that creating with, with the, the chamber position, the D D A manager's been outstanding. Um, I, I really appreciate, you know, what Mark's been bringing with his position, his years of experience and of course, you know, with, with Chief and the rest of the staff. Things are going really well right now as we transition to our busiest time of the year. Any questions for me?
Nope. Not for me.
Josh, how long will you keep plow, like, ready to go?
Um, so we'll, we'll have at least one plow of a standard. Um, on, until five A.
Okay. Uh, I just know everybody seems, you know, Springs here, teasing us and I'm not convinced that we're out in the woods yet.
The big trucks have the underground plow that'll always stay on.
Correct.
You know, so if we transition, taking the slayers out of the, we'll be the small standard in a one time. Well, that allows to, to be solved here.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Uh, she can.
Well, you see, the, the dates on my report are roughly three weeks to do that, because I have to slide you to prepare the report for this meeting. So the stat's only basically coming in three weeks. Um, and the one explains my absence at the last meeting is the one felony slash misdemeanor arrest. Uh, so it kind of baited, so, uh, and people were better at parking in the city, uh, after hours. And so there were only two citations issued for parking infractions. Six kind of special warnings, um, I think weather related, we did have three more vehicle crashes in that three week time period. That's just in these cities. And, uh, no open doors found in this time during property checks.
Good.
So, um, seven calls were handled by the Sheriff's Office when, uh, called after hours and no city officers on them. Uh, I did attend a number of meetings, um, local planning team meeting over in Yula, and I also had a big, my big meeting with, uh, the M Cole representative, Mr. Marsh. He traveled here from Escanaba to do a, call it sort of an audit of of the Police Department. Most of the errors he found or deficiencies that he found were in record keeping and training. So I'm working to remedy those. Um, some of the record keeping I can fix and send him updated information, he will update his report in the M Cole's to, uh, uh, to basically fix our, our grade. Overall, we got a passing grade. But those I can, I, issues I can remedy, some I can't. Uh, some of the personnel records are supposed to have more information in them. Um, but they do not, and some I can fix, some I cannot. More time. Uh, but overall, we got a passing grade. One of the deficiencies is our interview room. We have the room, but not the current ability to record felony interviews, which by law, some are required to be, kind of made audio or visually. Um, we do have a plan with, uh, it's our security company that runs the camera, to remedy that, but in the meantime, um, I had a proposal for the agenda to create an agreement between the Frankford Police Department and the Tennessee Sheriff's Office.
Which is on the agenda.
Yes, to use their interview room, so that, that will satisfy the M Cole's.
Okay.
For that deficiency.
I was gonna ask you, that was one of the deficiencies when we came to that agenda item, but thank you.
And those are only for in custody. Interviews that, for certain felonies that need to be, uh, recorded that way. But there, there is an off chance that if, if a person was arrested in the city, you'd want to like to get that interview done sooner than later. It may need to be done here, or if during the course of a interview. The, the felony is discovered, then we'd have to quickly be able to activate that. Uh, and then conduct the interview. At that. Uh, the radio encryption project is, uh, underway, the. New radios for patrol cars have been ordered. Uh, through Grand Avenue will lie for our city and all our portable radios have been sent to Texas. To be retrofitted, for lack of a better term. And we're working right now on loaners from Benzie Central Dispatch. So, those were set out, uh, a week ago today. So we should re, get those returned in about a week.
Okay.
Cool.
Good.
Good.
Any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Cedar Hill.
Um. We had about twenty-nine EMS runs in February and six fires. Uh, response time is about five minutes, uh, for EMS and four minutes for fire. Uh, year to date, right now, we have, uh, for month of March, we've got twenty-three EMS calls, fourteen in the city. And fire runs, we had ten fire calls, two of them were in the city so far this month. How much an increase of six over the last year. And fire runs will increase. Uh, in the three townships within the city, we had fifty-nine, what it said, twelve. Well, calls, average calls is seven weeks, three EMS and twelve for fire. Fourteen members was the average turnout and we're averaging about one point seven nine calls today. And most of the calls are maybe. Um, first model inspections continuing that, I've got a bunch on the schedule for the next couple of weeks. Uh, it's a training, I went in there, some leadership training I didn't want to, um. Fire Recovery USA, uh, we've submitted claims for two thousand fifty-one, you see the checker, corner sixty-one, seventy-six. Cost recovery. Uh, community risk reductions, talk about generator safety, as lights go out, some folks will be turning on their generators, keep them, and leave it outside. Um, another thing is carbon dioxide, we get a lot of carbon dioxide calls and, uh. We're destroying, some of them was just. Both first filters that weren't changed, they trip, trip system on out, so. Um, that's one of the common problems that we had. And then others were blocked by snow and ice on exhaust, which are causal, that full carbon dioxide. Um. Continuing, you know, different of meetings that I attended and, uh, community relations, fire drive through the doors, we've, we've touched on that. And my captain holds us. My hundred-year-old stepmother used to always say these little sayings, one of those country blessings, always country blessings. And she says, we transitioned from dark nights to seeing the world, daylight a little bit longer, and now the sun start coming up in the morning. Um. I liked the top lessons of the team that I have that are there during the cold. Or helping someone who's fallen, get up, spat and hit them. Shut off a boy and well-headed in their yard and comfort a sick and hurt person who's in pain. So we took, look around and really country blessings.
Very good.
Very good, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, no old business, moving on to new business.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. And it's the Lake Michigan Beach Bathroom Location, because Brady is, uh, the Red Board. Chair, and this is their recommendation.
Do you kind of wanna just kind of preface how we got to?
Yeah, um. We have like kicking back and forth, back and forth, um. We did meet down at the beach to put it against the dune. But, uh, we got. Many, many people saying that they. It was blocking their view after we made that decision the last time to put it there. Uh. There was a lot of controversy about putting it into the dune right off of. It was blocking the view of people looking down Miami, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and so. We, uh, had conversation with Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Smith. Uh, who lives right there too, uh, where they wish to have it. Back down into a dune down where the old first location was, uh. But, uh, we talked, uh, to Brady and several other Red Board. Members and it is. This is the least. This recommendation is the least. Impact, if you will, in that area. And I did have the conversation with the Armstrong Saturday to. I'll let them know that this was gonna be on the agenda tonight. And it was my understanding from the discussion that they had at the Red Board meeting. This would go right up against the fence. And we are willing to raise the height of the fence so that it basically hides. The whole structure. I was under the impression we could make it stronger and I, or smaller. But I was wrong in what I told you because. With having to have the utility unit. Between the two restrooms, it is gonna be a little bit la- larger, larger. So, uh, but, and we're more than willing to work with the Armstrongs, uh. On that corner, help them with, uh. The vegetation that is on the other side of the fence, uh. So it was unanimously decided.
Yeah, we went forward, you know, after this came back to the left way. Uh, you know, we were given the option of going back down on the beach or. Instead of, you know, up in the north dune of Miami, moving out. To the opposite side, which seemed to appease a few more people. We decided that, you know, based on, you know, after the public. Um, hearings we held just over a year ago. Uh, that down the beach was a, a non-starter. Um, and to go back to that, it's not gonna work. So the compromise was to move it from the north side to the south side. In front of Armstrong's house. And the Red Board voted unanimously that we move forward with that location.
And the fact that the state is, we're running out of time with the state.
We're running out of time with our grant. The other thing is, you know, for sewer water hookup, this is the best location, it's also. The most cost-effective location. Um, and, you know, we're looking at prefab unit. Um, and this spot also would be easier for a crane to get in to set the prefab that we choose. Um, so there's just a lot of, um. Bonuses to having them, uh, in this location.
Plus, we are going to be cause. Because of, uh, this project. We will need to be surveying also this, this area before we start doing anything. And, uh, one takeaway that we got from the public hearings that we had. They were requesting, uh. That, uh, we put a sign out there. Future location of Lake Michigan Bathroom, so that. Not everybody at the Le- Leaven Power comes in and says, you know, what are you doing, blah, 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 so.
So look forward to a sign on some sort of.
Yeah. Not a restroom sign, but at the end of mine, which is one of the requests of the Armstrongs, uh. Uh, and, and we are going to look into the, the parking issue. That is current a problem on Miami where we. Maybe we can, maybe we can't, but we're gonna try and say residents only. We had pictures from the Armstrong showing many people using their driveway for parking and. Turning around and, and I, I sympathize with them, you know, on that respect. So, does anybody have any? Want to say anymore?
No, I mean, I think we've talked this issue to death personally.
Yeah. So if we make this decision now and because, and this project will not start until probably after Labor Day. And that's the same time that Michigan Avenue is going to be renovated and. Or updated or whatever, so it just, yeah, ties in with that. This is a gravity.
Will be a gravity fee.
Instead of having to have a pump, which is also.
Same.
Be saving a lot of time.
Right. So. Is that, is that wall constructed in clothes? Just wood, concrete and wood?
Well, I think it's.
Sure, it's concrete and, uh, probably, that's what I thought.
You base it in wood, but we would make it high enough, so, because I said, in. The Andersons or Armstrongs, uh, living room and their, uh. Kitchen. And if that wall was put up, they would not see.
Wouldn't see the north at all.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Red Board to place Lake Michigan Beach. Restroom facility south of Miami, northeast, although this thing's uh, closer to Miami.
And I'll.
Decide.
We have to. Was there any other discussion between Johnson? Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stratton?
Yes.
Chargers?
Yes.
Okay. So. Uh, Police Department, part-time. Officer. Um. For several years, we had a part-time police officer. Um, and we are looking into, because the summer gets so busy. And that, so we are looking at having. A part-time police officer for thirty hours per week. At the wage of, which is the lowest wage of the union scale of twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh. And, uh, these expenses will be taking, taken out of contingency only. If, but into next year, uh, budget, we'll budget accordingly.
It's gonna be limited to.
Be limited to thirty hours a week.
I guess my question is, is how much? Is coming out of the general fund contingency? That's not.
We, we, we don't know that yet because.
Well, that would be nice to me.
Well, we don't, well, the plan is kind of to get the ad out there and have like a deadline. April fifteenth and then possibly start, so we would have May and June that we would have to figure that salary out on it.
I personally would like to know the actual funds that are coming out of general fund contingency first. And also, what are the dates of this part-time decision? It doesn't say anything about.
Well, we're not gonna see that at this time.
So.
We're gonna see if we can work into the budget to have the part-time year roll.
I don't think that's necessary.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So do you want to table this or do you want to?
I would like to table that till we have a little bit more information, I'd like to know. What the actual number is that it's gonna cost. And also what the dates are, you know, it worked best when it was like. Memorial Day to Labor Day, I believe.
I think we went into October a few times.
Possibly.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Okay, we'll table it. Uh. And if we have a special meeting by chance, before our next regular one, we'll get that information.
Well.
Chefs.
We'll make a motion to table this. For the time being until we have a little bit more information on it.
Okay. I'll second that then.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stratton? Sure. Chargers?
Yeah.
Cora?
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, allocation, allocation of unrestricted cash. Uh. We had our audit report. From. The auditor, like I said, came out pretty good this year, very good. And we ended up with a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars of unrestricted. Restricted cash, which means. We went under budget. Uh, so, because we have a closed, uh, union. There. Merz tier, which is our police department. Uh, we have nobody putting into that, so it's going to be. Finance committee's recommendation that we create a reserve line. Uh, Merz calls out tier reserve, and this is probably something we're gonna have to do every year. And Chris had did the calculation, she got, uh, from Merz. Of what it's gonna cost, so it's our proposal that we put sixty-two thousand dollars aside. Out of that hundred and fifty dollars, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, into a restricted cash reserves, that strictly for that Merz line. Because otherwise, we're gonna fall below that sixty percent we got the grant for before. So, uh, so that is our recommendation to, what to do with the leftover cash, if you will. So, and that will go into next year's budget and plus, uh. We're gonna have to look at that every year. In order to pay those individuals. So, and then the other recommendation is to transfer fifty thousand of the hundred. Fifty thousand into prior year. Prior year cash reserve. And then that will leave a balance of about thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars just in cash. So, so that's what our recommendation is. Any questions? So I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Your unrestricted cash to the Merz close tier reserve. In the amount of sixty-two thousand and to prior year cash reserve, the amount of fifty thousand. So. Question? Roll call.
Stratton? Do, Chargers?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, this is where we might need some help from the DDA. Uh, this is about the downtown social, now DDA social district. Uh. Like Rick said, uh. All of the research was done by Mark and then the, the ad hoc committee. I only have one objection to what you came up with. Uh, with having it extend to the alley and my objection is primarily because. That's going into a residential area. You follow me?
Yeah, so I'm not really bothered.
You're not bothered?
I don't know, I. I, I guess, I think they put it in the alley just to encompass. The, the fact that their businesses touch the back. The, the fact that their businesses touch the back alley. You know, and like Stone Cloud, you know, I could walk down. For alley that is, a lot of times I prefer to poke out back anyway, right, spot them.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think it's, that correct record, it's just because. In the back for business.
And in waterfront, I can understand that, because that's kind of a walkable path and so on and so forth. And. Mark said in his presentation, they're basically doing this anyway now with.
Right, yeah.
Years ago or mine to go or anything like that, so, uh. I don't know, and that was just my, my opinion, so it's totally up to you guys.
Um, I remember going through all this and really so, it's still kind of fresh in my head. I have no issues with really any part of this. Um, I've been to the Manistee, uh, and you know, the Silky District there, and it seems like it works really well. I actually talked to a couple of their officers, law enforcement officers one day when I was down there for the hot, pops and props. Uh, event a couple of years ago, and you know, as Mark had said, he talked to different. Uh, municipalities and are known issues, so.
I do have another question, then, all of the signage and all of that, is that gonna be DDA? Are they gonna do that, or? Okay. Okay, that was the other thing.
And so, couple of questions, one is, um. I, I'm, I'm supportive in, in general of the, uh, of the establishment of the social district, but I do have. I do have a few concerns, and that is, one is, is there gonna be any opportunity to. At certain times, uh, perhaps, uh. Exclude an area, I guess what I'm thinking of off the top of my head, uh, down there at the, uh. At the park, uh. Uh, across from Birch and Maple and so on and so, as we all refer to, as the, the goose. During the Fourth of July week, there's. Carnival there, predominantly, you know, gonna be kids in there all week, so on and so forth. Would there be an opportunity to, at least for that week, uh, you know, close that down? And then on Saturdays, there's the, uh, you know, the. Fatless market, and I know you said the opening hours would be about eleven AM to ten PM, right? Uh, at least initially, that's what you guys were thinking.
You have to list hours, isn't it, so?
But I guess what I'm concerned is.
I would say let's just use the park and stop, it's related to the honest network, but not in itself. Yeah, uh, there are, uh, vendors at farmer's market that sell wine, that offer samplings. So there are people already technically drinking.
Doing that.
Doing that.
I guess, you know, and my big concern there obviously was, you know, during that Fourth of July week. And then, was there a reason, I guess, what was the thought process on going all the way around by harbor lights? And, and then all the way down to. Because on the, if you correct me if I'm wrong, down on the beach isn't.
Alcohol slum.
Yeah, so we already have it down here.
Yeah, that was just to end, end the distance where the alcohol slum was set, so.
But I guess where would they be walking besides on this, on the road at some side?
So you could, well, if exit, you could exit the Bill Murray and walk on. The waterfront drive to the beach.
Go watch the sun instead. Okay. Yeah. And as you described, for the alcohol itself, it's only gonna be, uh, just the, uh. The people that have liquor license that, that, in, in some cases, they may have to get an upgraded liquor license or.
They do, don't they? Have to get a particular.
I think that everybody that's on issue now has the alcohol license.
Okay, but it would be just those people, so you wouldn't necessarily be able to bring down a, uh. A cooler with a six pack of beer or anything like that.
Yeah, and then in fact, just for that reason, so, right now, there's people that are highly in the open container block. And this, this would make it the.
And, and how it works is if, uh, if this district is created. If, uh, a patron went into Rick's and bought a, uh, beer, he's got a special cup or whatever. Non-glass container, but he can, that patron can't go into another establishment.
Their district or establishment or any establishment?
Any visible, you know, that we're still, I have a number every slate.
Yeah.
I understand.
It's one, seeing that got a, uh, a drink from, uh, the bill of cancer and walked into Stone Cloud.
No, no, that's, yeah, that's her, yeah.
And then, uh, was there any consideration given to any garbage associated with this, the glasses and the thing?
You know, that comes did not come out, um, sure. We certainly see already, yes.
And I, I, well, I, 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 and I don't see that as a big deal for most of the time, and obviously. This could be, okay, we'll have to see how it goes, I guess, I mean.
And who knows how much, oh, maybe it's, truthfully, it is. The last time this came up, it was more for that restaurant that had people lined up. You know, waiting for a table so they could go in, buy a beverage and be able to go to the park and, yeah.
Yeah.
And wait.
Wife can go ahead and shop and the husband can sit down here, raise fish and things.
So, that's my understanding.
So, so at this point, based on the presentation, I mean, basically what you guys are looking for is. Some sort of a, an agreement or commitment from the city.
To establish.
Further develop and establish the, the rules and regulations, have us approve that?
Yeah, I think, uh, the settlement of the E A was. Understand the thoughts of the city council, if the city council was agreeable, then we would. We would go through the next step and provide all documentation and everything filled out for you to approve. And we would not go through that extra.
So you're just asking approval. Establish of, of social district, not necessarily the details, like. It's my objection to, you know, so add like.
So, yeah, so maybe we may need a lot of case of the, uh.
Motion?
The motion.
With further.
Details.
Details to come forward.
In order to fully approve it, we have more documentation.
Yeah, I think one of that, so.
And, you know, candidly, if, um. Participants on the east end of Main Street right now don't want to participate, I mean, your wounds.
Gotcha, okay.
And you could follow the man, so if, when there's next development on the east end, and certainly.
Add it down the rows, okay. So, the motion must be then to approve. The establishment of a social district in downtown Frankburg with forthcoming details. That's it, that was my motion.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call. Yes.
Wilson?
Yep.
Brad?
Yep.
Okay. Very good, planning commission reappoints. Of course, Steve was appointed a couple of months ago, but he only had two months to serve. So he wishes to continue, and Linda Farrell is, uh, not re-upping. And so we have Corinne Walker, who would be willing to fill that position. So I'm going to make a motion, and no second is needed, to appoint Steve Huff Settler to a three-year term. His, was that closer, closer? That is set to expire three eighteen of twenty twenty-eight. And to appoint Corinne Walker to fill the opening left by Linda Farrell. A three-year term, which will expire three eighteen of twenty twenty-eight. And appoint Peter Penfold as planning commission representative to the DDA on an interim basis. Roll call.
Hold up.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yep.
Stratton? Chargers?
Yes.
I guess he's gonna have to whisper in my ear, just like Holbert, it has to be practiced. Okay, uh, and the next one is an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, I'll make a motion, and no second needed, to reappoint Liz McGar, McGraw. To a zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire, uh, four sixteen of twenty K. Roll call.
Wilson?
Yep.
Stratton?
Yep.
Chargers?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes, okay, Marina manager contract, first the, jumping at the bit to open. Josh?
I mean, no, we're already met on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Can they recommend to city council, current union manager, Marcus Helled, compensated as a city employee. Historical ten ninety-nine contract employee for the twenty twenty-five season. Uh, the authority further stated that if the city council decided to offer a ten ninety-nine contract, two point five percent. How much our increase would be recommended, within the twenty twenty-five salary to thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars? On two part requests that are well.
Well, I'm against, uh, as a city employee, so I will make a motion to compensate our. Marcus Helled, held, uh. As to continue his employment as a ten ninety-nine contract employee with a one-year contract. With a salary of thirty-two thousand, seven ninety, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
A second thing.
Discussion? Roll call.
Stratton?
No.
Chargers?
Yes.
We're not.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yeah.
And the next one is the last man attended contract with Cheryl Secoli. And everything is right there in front of you, Marina Authority recommended. Uh, two point five percent increase, however, I'm not in agreement with that. I think she should get a thousand dollars increase. Because she's down there by herself, and if she needs help in the busy time of the year. She pays out of her own blood. Whereas with the Marina, they've got assistants down there, and they've got summer house, so. That's just a client we talked.
Cheryl does do.
She does.
Down there, she is down there, it seems like twenty-four, so.
It seems.
No, I'm supportive.
Nobody is accusing Cheryl of that.
I just don't think it should be a percentage, I think it should be that flat dollar amount. So what I came up with, it would be twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And I double-checked my calculations to make sure I was correct, so.
Okay. I make a motion to approve any other issues COVID with the salary. Uh, with the revised salary, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sir?
Yes. Okay. Enter local agreement to opt out of designated assessor agreement. Few years back, uh, we had to do this because the county, uh. Was not in compliance with equalization. And therefore, we, which all of the entities in the county had to. Uh, go with this, uh. The, if the county should ever, uh, be out of compliance, Chris jumping anytime when correct. But, uh. Then, uh, one would be, uh, appointed, is that through the tax regional?
So according to the P A, it's, it's, uh, twelve twenty-four, gave the county the option to opt out of having a designated assessor. So if anyone who want assessing units in. Then the county became non-compliant with state task commission, would point someone that would step in and run their role and do all their assessing for them. In the past, we still had to pay all the expenses, so that nothing there's changed, we still incur the same expense. So there's no real change in that part.
Yeah.
Um, but it would just be pointed by the state tax commission, and now the county just had the expense of having someone on staff.
Yeah. So, I don't think we, and it's our assessor, he's doing such a pain in the ass. So I have a lot of confidence that we're gonna be okay. So I'm gonna make a, a motion to. Approve under local agreement for Binsy County to opt out of the designated assessor. And allow Mayor Holbert to sign on behalf of the city of Frankburg. Roll call.
Cora?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stratton?
Yes.
Okay, resolution to mutually assist the Binsy County Sheriff's Office. This is what Officer Getz was talking about earlier, uh. Do you wanna stand on that at all, Mark?
I do, please, you see. You can just go on, be the sign, make sure, or so we can use his, uh, interview room.
And so you can get your own.
Well, even, even then, if, if the person you need to interview is already in, in the jail. It doesn't make sense for us to have to.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to enter into a mutual assistance agreement. Binsy County Sheriff's Office, order to satisfy that agency audiovisual recording standard. And allow the chief, please, to sign the agreement on behalf of the city of Frankburg.
Roll call.
Wilson?
Yes.
Stratton? Chargers?
Yes.
Yes, okay, dude, thanks for hanging in. Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake Township short-term rental earnings inspections. Uh, like Jill said, I did have a conversation, she was onto me and told me. That because we had a contract with them for fire services and that, that he could just do that if we would. Uh, the city's position really is, is that it cannot be, uh, during his hours. Working for the city, if he wants to, to me, if he wants to take personal time or vacation time to go and do that. Like Jill said, that probably thirty is the maximum that they're allowing anyway. So, it's just.
I guess, like, the chief to weigh in on this, seeing as how. We're the ones kind of making the decision here. I, I, I would understand that, I would plan that on my vacation time or personal time. It's not, yeah, well, some of the, some of the factors that's been going in these houses, he's gonna know all the way up. And so, so that's, that's a huge advantage. Huge advantage for him to be able to store the old homes and shut it off. Um, so there's gonna be a. Definitely a bad. I guess my question was, does he does he wanna do that on his personal time or on his vacation time?
My Thursday midday, I coordinated my forty hours for the week, so yeah, basically, I took Friday. How many hours a week do I normally put in? Sixty hours a week. So it's like, yeah, I gotta take off the afternoon on Friday to go do a couple of inspections, it'll be real or a vacation time.
How do you guys feel about that? I mean, yeah, I. Gets to use sometime, and I know he already puts in.
Well, and I. I'm gonna use Josh as an example, he's the. Zoning administrator for several other townships. And we can't have him doing that on city time, so I'm using that as the same example.
Okay.
If you will. Yeah. But we're gonna work on. Something so that.
Well, it sounds like.
Chief will won't have to put in those many hours.
Right, and it sounds like the township Judy is hoping that the chief can kinda come in and. Show your enforcement officer. What to look for, maybe this is kind of a training thing as well, so that your enforcement officer can then do the inspections. I thought that was being a joke. Isn't that what Joe kinda said earlier?
That's that's kinda what I got from it.
Tried to keep uh. We already have a contract, things of a fighter, you know, most services. To just tack that on, just keep things a bit cleaner. And, you know, I don't know, I guess now I'll have to have a. A separate contract with Mike. I think that was the original.
Like I said, I'm I'm using Josh as an example, and I agree with Josh, that's gonna be an advantage. Is that for him to go into these homes and, you know, that. He does cook anyway, but uh, and like I said, I just. I have a problem of doing it on city time. I just.
Do we understand that?
Yeah.
It's a situation, you know, if you keep track of this time and, like I said, typically gets a score in. Like Thursday, uh, and you know, it's not a story, you know, you give yourself a opportunity for. You're ensuring that he gets a score here, you know, and he comes at all times.
Yeah, I I know, I sign his time sheets every every week. There's some that go up to sixty hours and most of them are fifty fifty five hours a week that he puts in.
I I think if uh, if Crystal Lake Township is gonna be compensating him separately.
Yeah.
And there's some opportunity, some opportunity, if he's getting his hours in with the city of Frankford. And completing his task for the city for.
That once he gets his forty hours in, then he could.
Well, yeah, I mean, he's gotta take care of the city for him business first, and I think that there could be an opportunity. Uh, for him to, I mean, because it's not gonna be like. All day long and missing all day long, so you know, it's probably gonna be a. A one off here, one off there, one or two off here or there. And I don't know how long these inspections take, but I can't imagine that these inspections take much more than. Forty five minutes to an hour, I mean, you're checking off egress exits, you're checking fire extinguishers, you're checking. Uh, smoke alarms, uh, so on and so forth, several things from the fire stand, you know. And uh that, um. You know, emergency contact list, whatever, um.
See, I'm just trying to break the. The double dipping, if you will. Yeah, I, so.
I and I understand that, I guess in this particular case, I'm just telling you, I'm not too concerned about that, but the hours and the effort that.
That puts in, so in other words, if he gets a contract and Crystal Lake. Pays him for that hour, whatever.
Or however he says, I mean, he'll do it on a, on a per house basis or something.
Right. And that's for them to work out there.
Exactly.
But it can't be. Like I said, double dipping. So. How are we going to? Word is that. How be if we say perform short term rental inspections for Crystal Lake Township? Will cross out on his own time.
No, I think.
I would think it would be, it would be typically on.
And it's okay, leave on on his own time, not during. City hours, uh. True contract with Crystal Lake Township. Per contract.
And if we see problems, then we'll.
Okay, so. I'm gonna just read it, I'm not making the motion, okay?
You make the motion. I make the motion to approve. Fire chief Cederholm for short term rental inspections for Crystal Lake Township on his own time.
Okay, public input. Yes, Jay. We lost to have our three points.
So just wanted to commend the. Council for the red board for hanging in there on the detrusting, thank you, uh, I know, I I know where they are, it's a tough. Acceptance to be in their home and to know that restroom, they were saying that. You guys can do mitigates to minimize that intrusion on them, I know they'll appreciate, we will appreciate. And in all the many details, including, you know, one of the volleyball group, so our group will significantly appreciate having. Uh, footrestrooms and so, you know, walking down this hole and, you know, if you don't wanna go in. So thank you uh for that, I'd also just like to. Uh, thank the council and the mayor for. Last year really making a decision to uh consider it a new uh sector for our community. So I had an opportunity to interact. With Wyatt recently and uh left a phone message for him. It was which will return promptly, even though I'm sure he was busy. Uh, with what's going on right now with um overview meetings, um. My call was in regard to um, uh, part of the Frankberry Community Land Trust. We have two new homeowners that do qualify under Public Act one fifty six. Of twenty twenty two, uh, to have their assessed value placed at their first mortgage balance. So the state act, uh, Senator Wyatt, you read it, I talked with him later, he said, yep. Pretty good, right, um, so. Uh, set that up for us at the last review meeting last week, trying to handle complications were approved, so. Yeah, that would make a huge difference for those two owners, but also for any other. New owners that were working with in terms of their um affordability of their homes, so, thank you.
Any other public input?
Chargers.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you all. You'll need to uh. Come in and see first to get sworn in. Oh, do you?
Oh, it's it's free, well, hopefully she's gonna wine sadness.